For the folks joining us online, I've got a ten fifteen minute survey version. That's basically the same thing as we're going to be doing in the breakout activity. So for our online folks, it'll probably only be about an hour, hour fifteen minutes. You'll be you'll be out a little bit quicker. Um, so just a quick introduction about what we're doing here and with this planning effort. So a housing production plan is a way for towns to better understand your local housing need and demand, your developing constraints and opportunities, and to create a vision for future affordable housing. So the town of Berlin actually already has a housing production plan that was finished in twenty seventeen. These are five year plans, so the plan is actually expiring. So that's why we wanted to do an update with more up to date housing information. Things have changed in the last five years. So that's why we're here. As well as updating, it's a it's a dual effort of updating housing production plan and the housing chapter of the master plan. For folks who aren't familiar with the master plans, it's a policy guide and framework to direct future land use and preserve and manage the town's resources in support of its community vision. It's a document that assesses existing resources and issues, makes projections for future conditions and needs and establishes long range goals. So basically, it's your overarching document that you'll refer to when making decisions for the the future of the town. The last time the housing chapter was was updated was either twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. So again, things have changed since then that we want to incorporate into the master plan. How can a housing production plan help the town? This this plan will help address unmet needs and demands. It'll establish a vision for the future of housing with clear goals and objectives. It will. So I'll get into this more about the ten percent affordable housing goal threshold that is mandated by the state. The town of Berlin has actually already achieved that goal, but having this plan in place will help you maintain that you are meeting the the state's requirements for affordable housing. This will also having a plan in place also helps prevent unwanted check the forty B developments under comprehensive permitting. I'll talk a little bit more about what that means in this presentation. And this plan helps influence and identify the type, location, and amount of housing being developed in the future. And with the activity today, that's something we'll be discussing. The most appropriate locations for housing, any housing in the future, and what types of housing residents would like to see. Just a quick overview of the project timeline. This kicked off in March of this year. Since then, we've been working on data collection. We had a community survey out from early May to the end of July. The survey results are available. Two copies are here. If you got them at the beginning, I'll also be reviewing that. Doing a quick overview in this presentation, and they should be available online. They aren't online. We'll get them on there soon on the town website. And then today, we have the community workshop. We'll also be doing stakeholder interviews to get some really good input from boards and committees and other stakeholders in the town regarding housing. What has worked in the past, what is not, what they would like to see from their perspective in the future. And then we'll be drafting the plan and submitting it to the Department of Housing and Community Development to be hopefully passed. It has to go to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen before we can submit it to D H C D. Okay, so getting into the good stuff, chapter forty B and comprehensive permits. So like I said before, just keep in mind that Berlin has actually achieved this ten percent threshold, but it is important to understand what this means and why the state has said this. So every municipality in Massachusetts must maintain at least ten percent of its housing stock deed restricted in the deed that it is affordable to households earning eighty percent or less of the area median income. So the town will be broken up into a certain area based on the area median income. Eighty percent of that is the standard for affordable housing. For folks to qualify for it. It's a law that provides opportunities for developers to bypass local zoning in towns that are under this ten percent threshold. But there's quite a few towns in central and western Mass, and eastern as well, that have not met this two percent threshold. So developers can come in and bypass any local zoning if it's zoned for a single family, they can bypass that and create multifamily housing. As long as some of those units are deed restricted as affordable. But the good news is the town as of right now is not subject to that. We still do want to plan for affordable housing and meet the needs of our residents here. Because ten percent, well, it's the you know, bottom, the 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 bottom threshold may not be meeting every need, every resident's needs, so. And there are also different safe harbor options that give towns an opportunity to prevent these forty B developments from happening. So what does affordable actually look like when we're talking about affordable? So Berlin is part of a the eastern, eastern Worcester County area median income like district. These are set up by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So these are, yeah, these are federally set areas. So there's towns like Bolton, I think Clinton is in there. It's probably fifteen or twenty towns that are included in this area for the area median income. They update it every single year, which means the thresholds for qualifying for affordable housing are updated each year. So as of twenty twenty two, it's one hundred and thirty five thousand. So for a single person household, they have HUD has their own calculation, so it's not quite eighty percent. It depends on the number of people in the household and, yeah. I I won't get into the 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 math, but for a single person household right now in Berlin, sixty two thousand six hundred is the threshold for qualifying for affordable housing. So that's your, what you earn annually. For a two person household, that's just under seventy two thousand. And, yeah, this is updated every year. Yeah, so you get a sense of who might be earning qualifying for affordable housing. This isn't extremely low income housing. This is, you know, it could be teachers or firefighters, librarians. Yeah, civil workers, people you need for the town to thrive. So just keep that this in mind as we're talking about affordable housing. Because again, this is a plan that's submitted to the state, so we're using the state guidelines. I won't get into this too too much because again, the town has it has met the ten percent mark, but yeah, this is just a slide here about the comprehensive permit and how developers can bypass the local zoning. If twenty five percent of the units in their proposed development are affordable, and so this is for towns that are under the ten percent. It doesn't waive other permitting requirements, like state access highway permits, wastewater, wetlands, it's just the zoning. So just to give a sense of how the ten percent is calculated, so it's always going to use the most recent census as a basis. Because the full census results are not out yet, it's just the redistricting data that's out. The state is still using the two thousand ten census as a basis for your ten percent. So you think in this includes affordable units, market units, the total number of units that are in the town. So as of two thousand ten, the town had one thousand one hundred and eighty three units, but you think since then, units have been added to the the housing stock, so. Had the number written down, of course, you can't find it, but when the probably in the next six months or so, they'll they'll be updating to the full results. Hopefully, it's already twenty twenty two. And we don't have the full results of twenty twenty yet, but so your percentage is going to change a little bit. It could go down if you've been adding more market rate housing and not adding affordable units. So right now, Berlin has one hundred and eighteen units. Oh, no, I'm sorry, one hundred and eighteen units is the ten percent target. Based on two thousand ten, the number of units that this the town currently has is two hundred and one. So you can see you far exceeded that. You're at seventeen percent. So you do not currently need to produce any affordable units in order to achieve the ten percent bar. You can see where the town stacks up in comparison to your surrounding towns. Towns like Hudson and Marlboro and North Road, they've also achieved the ten percent, but look, you guys are fantastic. All right, so just a little bit about the community data in Berlin. This is using the twenty twenty Americans Community Survey five year estimates. So it's a like a sample of the population. It's not the full census. But it's usually pretty reliable, and I like to take things. They'll give you a margin of error, so I tend not to use things with huge margins of errors, but it's it's usually pretty reliable. So as of twenty twenty, there are twelve thousand or twelve hundred ninety one households. Just slightly less than a quarter of householders live alone. So we're trying to think of, does the housing stock match the people who are here? Are there enough households for people who maybe only need one bedroom or two bedroom? And if not, what can they town do to to make improvements to that and make sure that housing stock matches the needs of people living here? Fifteen percent of households are elderly, single person households, twenty percent of households have children. Thirty percent of residents, senior residents have a disability, and the median age is forty nine point eight. That's up, I believe, the previous median age was I think it was like thirty nine in the year two thousand. So that's up a lot. So you can see your population is aging. Whether that's people are getting older and remaining here, there are fewer people moving in, people are having fewer kids due to a number of reasons, delaying having kids, having fewer kids, maybe they're living in more urban areas. That's something to think about as well, and the median household income is hundred four thousand, just about. And based on the the census, the census estimates, thirty eight percent of households are earning less than seventy five thousand annually. I think it's sixty five, but I can double check that, yeah. Oh, which slide here? Yes, so to clarify, this is the area. So it's it's, yeah, that's why it's a little confusing. Yeah, so this is about fifteen or twenty towns in eastern and western county. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, and I'll try to stop more and ask for questions too, because this can be a lot of data, a lot of information. So that was more population characteristics in terms of housing characteristics. There is, we're working with twelve hundred and sixty occupied housing units, eighty six percent of those are owner occupied, fourteen percent are renter occupied. So you may want to consider, okay, maybe there there's more of an need for renter housing. The vacancy rate looks pretty healthy right now. Usually, we want to be between four and six percent, have a little wiggle room there for people moving in and out. But you don't want to have a super high vacancy rate, or then you don't want to have nothing. You want to have a little bit. So that looks great. Eighty one percent of houses in town are single family homes. The median home value, I believe, yeah, this is as of twenty twenty, was four hundred and thirty eight thousand two hundred. In twenty twenty one, the median sale price for single family homes was five hundred and sixty five thousand. Again, we're coming out of a very interesting time post COVID, so a lot of towns in this area are are very high for sale of single, single family homes. Condo prices were also very high, four hundred and forty thousand. Condos tend to be a way that younger, younger folks can enter the housing market without getting a large single family home. Maybe they haven't started a family yet, but they're looking to yeah, build like yeah, equity and yeah, ownership of housing. I think that's all I have for that one. As well as a way, sorry, back to the condos, it's also a way for people to downsize too. So for people who maybe are empty nesters or yeah, their kids aren't living at home anymore, they just really can't take care of a large single family house, a condo can be a nice option where you don't have to take care of a lawn or shovel the sidewalks, the driveway, whatever. It's a little bit smaller and it's a little bit cheaper. Now I just look at some of the community survey results. Again, these are printed out, so feel free to browse, but I just want to go over a few things. So we had one hundred and ninety four, sorry, that said Spencer, that was supposed to say Berlin. I work with forty towns, so sometimes my mind is all over the place. So one hundred and ninety four Berlin residents filled out the survey. Ninety one percent of those who filled it out are homeowners and four percent responded that they're renters. Thirty seven percent of respondents have lived in town for twenty more years. So we've got a lot of people living here, and this is their home. This is where they grew up, their families grew up, and they're probably looking to stay. So we want to make sure that the town has affordable options and diverse housing stock for people to remain here. Out of the survey respondents, sixty one percent live in one or two person households. Twelve percent, and I did a little bit of the math based on the number of people in the households and their annual household income. So out of the people who took the survey, actually twelve percent would qualify for affordable housing based on those metrics in a previous slide. So that's a little interesting thing to note. Sometimes people aren't aware of like, actually, how many people in your community would would qualify for affordable housing. So what types of housing and who is needed? Based on the survey results, there's a question in there that asks you to select which types of housing you think are most desirable in Berlin. So the top ones were small market rate homes geared towards first time home buyers. Second was small, single family market rate homes geared towards seniors. Third was medium sized, single family homes. Fourth was a cottage housing community. Five was accessory dwelling units, and six was accessible housing for people with disabilities. Another question asked about the populations who are most in need of increased and diverse housing options. The first was first time home buyers, so that kind of matched up with the most desired housing types looking to attract more and and offer options for for people who are trying to enter the housing market. Second was families, third was low income households, fourth was seniors, and fifth was single adults in need, such as those who are survivors of domestic abuse or veterans or those in recovery. So keep these in mind when we're doing our activity too. Just a couple more questions that were from the survey. Sixty four, when asked about plans for aging into retirement, or if you're already retired, sixty four percent of respondents plan to live in their current home as they age. However, thirty percent, thirty two percent of those that want to live in their homes as they age are unsure or they know they will not be able to afford the housing costs. So that's a third of people who are really unsure about their future. But would like to remain here. Yep, and then fifty eight percent of the survey responses said it's either extremely reported important or very important to remain in Berlin as they age. Another question asked, if you were going to move out of the community, what would drive your decision to move? This is always kind of an interesting thing to look at. So the first one was looking for a different home size that meets your needs. So maybe houses are a little too large for folks. They are looking to downsize. Are there enough like smaller households in town to allow folks who this is their community to continue to live here? The second was maintaining your current home will be too physically challenging. So maybe stairs are an issue or, yeah, maintaining yeah, the lawn and the difficult winters that we have here. So maybe something like an apartment or a condo might be an easier option for for homes. The third one was maintaining your current home will be too expensive. Yeah, especially for for those people, the question was raised, I think, as as you're looking into retirement, so especially if you're looking into living on a fixed income, maybe you can afford your home now, but in the future, it it may just be too expensive. And the fourth was looking for an area that has a lower cost of living. So that kind of goes hand in hand with maintaining the home will be too expensive. There were a ton of open comments that were submitted. I included some of them in the the survey results there. They're always so interesting to see what people's specific needs are in their comments. A lot of people love living here. They wrote it in the comments, so it was really nice to see, but some other themes that came up was concern for overdevelopment, wanting to preserve the small town feel of Berlin. I know that can be a big concern with new housing going in, as making sure you still have that small town character. But there are options that we will talk about today that can kind of balance that. Preservation of open space and farmland, you know, this is a big agricultural community, so it's important to preserve that. Rising cost of living, including taxes and energy costs, definitely a challenge for folks these days. It's just getting getting bad. Desire for safer walking options like sidewalks and rail trail, that's something I haven't seen a lot in surveys, but that came up quite a bit. So we think about new housing, we want to make sure it's not just car oriented. It it can be in a location where people can walk to to amenities and such as like open space or town, town center, the mall, whatever. All right, so just a little bit into, oh, any questions? I just want to stop and make sure. All right, move ahead. What options exist for fulfilling Berlin's housing needs? So there's always the option to engage developers with friendly forty B options. Right now, you're not susceptible to unfriendly forty B options, which is, I use this slide for other presentations, so I like to keep it in there, but yeah, so you, the town can pursue engaging with developers with town owned land that could be turned into a forty B development with deed restricted affordable units. The town can also look into encouraging housing developments such as cluster developments or modest multifamily units in suitable areas of town. I have a slide after this that I'll talk a little bit more about what that can look like. The town can also utilize reliable sources of funding, such as your CPA fund. A certain percentage of that has to be used towards affordable housing initiatives. So you do have that funding available. As well as an affordable housing trust fund, I believe the town passed the language for that to be accepted to establish an affordable housing trust fund. This happened at the last town meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. And there are also zoning amendments that the town can make to allow greater diversity in housing options. Actually, going to skip to this slide real quick. So when we're talking about this term, the missing middle housing. So this is housing that describes certain housing types with a little more density, it's multiple units. But they're compatible in scale with single family homes, which is primarily what the town has here. It's single family neighborhoods. So we're thinking duplexes, townhouses, cottage housing communities, a little bit closer together or units stacked on top that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. You're not going to get this huge mid rise building going in the middle of town. You're going to get a little bit more housing, but it it fits with the character of the community. So these are kind of options that that the town can pursue when we're thinking about adding additional housing in the future. It's also a more sustainable form of housing. And I included a link in there that has some more descriptions of of some of the housing types and some really great examples. And then just go back to the municipal affordable housing trust fund. Since the town voted to adopt the language for this, I just want to talk a little bit about what this could mean for the town. So it's something that allows municipalities to collect funds for affordable housing and then segregate them out of the general municipal budget into a trust fund and use the funds for local initiatives to create and preserve affordable housing. So the sources for this, it's not an additional tax. The sources can be whatever in the CPA fund, negotiated developer fees, tax title, sales, private donations, resale of affordable units as market rate or could be the town's general fund. So those are things that could go into this affordable housing trust fund, and it could be used for, there's a wide variety and flexibility with a affordable housing trust fund. It can provide financial support for the construction of affordable units, rehabilitate existing homes to convert to affordable housing, preserve properties faced with expiring affordability restriction, create programs to assist low and moderate income home buyers and families or help families make families make health and safety repairs to their units. There's a lot of options, so it's important to know that the town does have these CPA funds, which could be put into an affordable housing trust fund, giving the town more flexibility to pursue various affordable housing initiatives. Okay. Actually, going to go. So we're going to be doing a breakout activity. So I'm going to explain that. I first want to go over kind of that, some of the housing types that we're going to be talking about in the housing in the breakout activity. These housing types will also be in the survey that is sent out to the remote participants. So just a quick, quick overview, we're going to be talking about accessory dwelling units. These can be attached or detached standalone units as part of a single family home. We've got a cottage cottage housing community, which is a really, really interesting concept. There are some beautiful examples out there, even locally in Massachusetts. It's a group of small, single family, there's still single family homes, but they're a little bit more clustered together. And they're a little bit smaller, so they're either single level or kind of one and a half levels, generally eight hundred, twelve hundred square feet. They're clustered around a common area, whether it's like a shared common space or like a walkway or community building, something like that. Then we've got the tiny house community, a little bit different. It's a group of dwellings that are typically a lot smaller. It's under six hundred square feet clustered around a common area. I'm sure folks are familiar with kind of the tiny house movement. These can be like on a foundation or on wheels. Then we've got small scale apartments, which are small to medium sized structures, usually two to six rental units arranged side by side or stacked on top of each other vertically. We've got small scale condominiums, which are a group of detached or attached structures divided into several units, usually also have a common area and are jointly owned and maintained by a community association. Large scale apartments or condos, we're going to be talking about a group of multiple, multiple medium to large structures divided into numerous units, each separately rented or owned, also surrounded by a common area. That's got a nice pool. That looks great for the summer. Then we've got a mixed use residential commercial. So we've got the, it's typically structured as a commercial business or office space on the first floor with residential units on top. And townhouses are small to scale, small to medium sized attached structures that are, can be anywhere between two and sixteen units. Multi stories, usually two or three stories that are attached side to side. And then there are so many examples out there of senior housing or assisted living facility. That's just one example that I took. So it can be a housing facility for older adults with disabilities or those who cannot live independently. It could be anywhere between living spaces for individual rooms or apartments or shared quarters and facilities are generally designed to promote independence of residents, but can offer a range of medical services. So that was just a quick overview before we get into the breakout activity. Before I describe the breakout activity, are there any questions? Because this is pretty much the summary of my presentation here, so.
Yeah. Yeah. The issue with, in other words. Here in Berlin's size, median income, how is our numbers compared to some of the other towns in the human size?
Yeah, so the question is about um how the data stacks up to um other towns. I'm trying to think, so, um. Honestly, there's a lot of towns that have uh more residents, they are larger than Berlin. But they'll have pretty much zero affordable units, so I would say Berlin, it's very impressive with with its commitment to building affordable units. Um. Uh. Yeah, I'm trying to think, yeah, go ahead. Do you want to pull up the chat or should?
Yeah. So. I'm going to go back to the slide of accessory dwellments. Um.
The picture or?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, um. A little bit in the chat, what about apartments, those homes? That is more of a rental room, the most type of rooms to another household, seems like way of extending their homes, so that would also be included. Having accessory volume, that's just like a potential form. Honestly, in this region, we mostly see them as like extensions to houses or like little hats, like you know, with the, with the same room that has a skill. So just for.
Yeah, these types of housing can take a lot of different forms, these are just examples that I took that. Based on what I know about Berlin could look good and and fit into the town. Uh, but yeah, again, accessory dwelling units, it can be attached, um. Um, or it can be a a separate unit in someone's garden.
Yeah, in my experience, most towns, they're going to most affiliate that on separate volume. Adding to a house, if that, if the house has many can be repaired, okay.
Hmm.
Um, so I don't, I'm actually, I don't, I don't know. Berlin rules are, but um typically, you know, from the, from the street, you would even know the apartment there, like an extra apartment spot. Uh, you wouldn't even know who did another house, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's something we're looking for from the the public input part, if people know of, um folks that have tried to maybe set up an accessory dwelling unit, but it's been really difficult to permit. Or that it's just been. Very restrictive, um that's something we would love to hear about, because that's something that could come out of this plan. Is a recommendation to alter the zoning, so it would be easier for people to create a housing like this. Um, saying goes for something like a cottage community, um would, um is that something folks would be interested in the town and does it, is it something like that allowed anywhere in town? Um, so that's something we're. Going to be talking about today, um we're really looking to see what kind of pops out to you um out of these housing options and where you think. Potentially they could go in the future. Um.
Uh, uh. The restrictions of challenge. They use the growth aspect and they build a lot of trucery. This is a portion where they go. It's actually got more of an aspect, it's called, you know, being a Florida, having to.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 the question was about uh keeping uh affordable, affordable. Yeah, I guess maintaining the affordable housing stock, because it will change as market rate units are added, um. I actually printed out the town's um. All the units that are listed um under the affordable housing stock, yeah, carry can get it, there is, all of them I saw are listed, um they're. Uh, affordable in perpetuity, there's only one on there that will expire and I think it was twenty twenty eight, I think it's the Brook Village, I believe. Um. But yeah, that's also the reason why we're doing this plan is, um. We're working off of the two thousand ten numbers, so while you do have seventeen percent of your housing stock. Deed restricted as affordable, um you have added uh market rate units. To the housing stock, so if you haven't been adding affordable units recently, that number is going to go down, um. I think I'm working off the top of my head, but I think they're all, yeah, they're all, the one at the very top, I thought said twenty. So that's one that the town would want to. Oh, it's one, yeah, okay. Every unit counts.
Hello? Um, hello, I'm on the phone.
Yes.
And I'm having trouble hearing anybody else other than the presenter. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, might I make a comment? My name is Charlene DeKellagero and I'm a resident.
Sure.
Yeah, um. So we were, um, talking about maintaining the housing, um. The affordable housing stock, so I just shown a, I can send this also out to folks that had registered. Um, this is something that's uh available from the Department of Housing and Community Development, it's a list of all the the um. Affordable units, uh or like groups of units that are. Um, deed restricted in town, it's called the subsidized housing inventory. Every town um has access to this and uh has their own um. Part on the inventory, um so we were looking at uh the. Um, expiring, uh. Yeah, affordability for each of those and um all of them are in perpetuity for the town, um.
Yeah, um, excuse me, I'd like to talk about this quote unquote unfor- affordable housing. And how it's not affordable. Um, and how we are facing a real problem with needing much more. Um, accessible housing stock. Um, we need to think about affordability as something that low income, moderate income and middle income. Households can access, um forty B is absolutely unaffordable for a lot of people. Um, I live in a forty B development and we could not find people who qualified. In the very narrow window of financial limits. Um, to buy three of our forty B houses, that's terrific. And forty B is, at least in my development, not subsidized subsidized in any way, shape or form. Other than by the residents themselves, which is not subsidized.
Okay, did anyone hear that?
Yeah.
Yes, you did hear that, okay, I was, you did hear, okay, I was like, that was a lot for me to, but um. Yeah, that's a really good comment here, um so you were talking about, you were trying to find. Folks that would match the the regular like eighty percent um threshold. Cause there's also other thresholds, there is very low income, which would be affordable to folks earning thirty percent. Or fifty percent of the area median income, um that would be deed restricted. There's also extremely low income threshold, which would be deed restricted, um, yeah, for that, for that, um. Group. So that may be something the town wants to pursue, is if there's very low income or extremely low income housing. Um, not just regular low income housing, I guess, for lack of a better term, um that's affordable for eighty percent uh or less. But that is an interesting comment, um. I would love if you could send that to me in writing too, just so I can get that down and try to kind of incorporate that into the plan.
Um, where would I send? Where would I send that to?
Um, can you, oh, she's on the phone. Yeah, we we can jot your number down and give you a call, um and talk about that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, again, my name is Charlene.
Thank you. Charlene, hey, it's Beth, I'm here, so I'll get the information you need about where to send it, so write something up and I'll bring over and ask her. Did you catch that, Charlene? Beth is here and she will um coordinate.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's what I like to call like capital A affordable, which is like. What we're working with, with HUD and DHCD, and then there's lowercase affordable, which is more kind of naturally for um affordable housing. And unfortunately, we do have to work with these these standards um with the state, which can definitely absolutely be a challenge, um. Any other?
Other towns you face with the capital A affordable, um with the people who qualify for those concerned about.
Absolutely, that's another difficult point, yeah. Hmm.
Yeah. The request in chat would be your comments about. Uh, I believe about the capital A.
Oh, okay, I probably said it too quietly, yeah, so what we're. Talking about here in this presentation in this room is what I call capital A affordable housing. Um, so that's the eighty percent of the area median income, that's the standard that's used across the state. Versus kind of lowercase affordable housing, which is housing that's. Naturally occurring affordable housing, so based on um you know, your income and how much you're paying for rent or mortgage. Um, it's not housing that's deed restricted, um so it's just naturally occurring, it's affordable in the the market that you're in. So what we're talking about in the presentation today is the capital A affordable housing, the eighty percent um of the. Median income of the area, which Berlin is in the area of Eastern Worcester County. Um. I hope that was clear. Other um questions, comments? Just check the time. Now we're getting time, okay.
So. Two hundred and one women to the channel that classify as affordable are up to date. And they represent who we are today. Whereas the census uh. Is ten years old, quality. So. We assume. That the new houses that have been constructed in the last decade. The twenty twenty census will weigh somewhere around fifteen, sixteen hundred thousand units in town instead of letting through. But the two hundred and one units long chain, in fact, it will probably draw by. Um. Because the soy hill number was seventeen, that's not accurate anymore. You'll gain some with Highland Ridge. And and that'll give us a little bond, but that'll also then. Sixty seven units of a different product, so.
Hmm.
That will show up on the census. But we may be able to get those numbers on the S H I. Before the twenty thirty, so that'll. Help us improve the numbers, so we're gonna be somewhere. You know, above putting consent probably for the next decade, given what the state works to feed.
Okay.
Um, so we, we're comfortable with the one.
Yeah.
But with a housing trust in place. The potential to help with Darlene's stock, first time home buyers, um people that. Need assistance in trying to purchase an affordable unit, that trust can help that process. So maybe we can help. That now, yeah, and people that fit in. Well, because they get some assistance from the trust.
Yeah, that would be a great thing to consider, a lot of towns have done um a first time home buyer program, um where they offer, um, yeah, grants to um funding for. First time home buyers, um. To just be able to enter the market, um a lot of people can pay uh, you know, a mortgage and and a hu- housing cost, but it's really that down payment. That is so difficult and is excluding a lot of people from entering the first time, uh we're entering the the home market. Um. A lot of good comments. Anything else? What about in the chat, Eve? No more, okay. So I'm just gonna describe what we're gonna get into the the breakout activity, so I'm just gonna, just for remote participants first, um. I gave has or will post a link um in the chat box, so please go to that link, um and it's like a ten fifteen minute survey. Um, it will be open for a few weeks, so if you don't, if you're busy tonight and you don't have time to take it, don't worry about it. Um, it'll still be open, because we also want to put this probably on the town website, um for other folks who could not attend tonight, um. And uh, yeah, so basically, once you um open that link and are good to go, your uh remote participants are welcome to uh log off the meeting. But we have one person entering now, um. Okay, hopefully that's clear for our remote um participants. So for folks that are here in person, um so we're gonna be, you can see that we've got some breakout group tables, um. We're going to be breaking out into, try to evenly disperse yourself, you don't really care who you sit with, um maybe planning board credits, spread yourselves out, um. So each table has a large map um of Berlin, hope you're familiar with. Uh, so myself and the planning board worked to create these uh, we're gonna call study areas. Um, so there is in the town that, um for whatever reason, if there is town on land or land that can be redeveloped into housing. Um, could potentially in the future, there's no current plans for any of these sites. Um, as far as I know, um for housing, but we want to start to generate a discussion about. If there was a proposal for housing to go in there, what would you like to see? Um, we brought one of these, um, like stickers, but they're not actually. Oh, oh, that was. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so those are the different housing types that I went through um previously, we've got the tiny house community and the apartments and everything. Um, so you can go through and for each of the the study areas um on the map. Put one or two of those housing types and uh next to it, maybe there's write a few notes about what's. Like about it, um, maybe something's been tried before and failed, anything, this is your opportunity to share with myself and the planning board, your knowledge of your town. And what you would like to see uh in the future, this is a planning exercise, um. Keep in mind, uh, this is, I'm not going to ship this directly off to a developer and say, okay, everyone in this room. Small scale apartments, you know, in this neighborhood, but this is, this is part of, you know, we have to start somewhere, so. Um, I'll be going around to the different tables, um. Let me know if you have questions or comments on anything, I'm here to answer questions as best that I can. Um, but yeah, this should be kind of fun, feel free to just make this a work of art, write notes and stickies and everything. Um, and then we'll spend, you know, half an hour or so. On this, I think that should be good, about half an hour, and then we'll just. A few minutes at the end, um just kind of regroup and just talk about, um.